The governor's the governor's statement. All right, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th. Well, first, I'm going to call the meeting to order of the zoning board of appeals in town of Free Town on December 9th, 2020. Let the record show all members who are present. Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 19, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict strict limitations on the number of people they may gather in one place. This meeting of the Free Town Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort is being made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by assessing the Zoom meeting information listed on our meeting postings for this meeting. A recording of this meeting will be made available on the town's YouTube channel, youtube.com/freetownmass, or accessible by visiting freetownmass.gov/frecam following this meeting. Okay, fellas. Anybody like to, I'd like you guys make a, make a motion to waive the readings of the I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the public here. This is Nick.
Second.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Motion's are made and to waive the reading of the public notices. Uh, Rob Joes.
Aye.
Nick Velozza.
Aye.
Jim Frey's.
Aye.
Okay. All right, the first meet, we're going to take, I was going to call to order the first, the first meeting of the night, which will be Elwood and Elaine Hutchins, Jr. for 28 Horon Ave. Uh, who would like to, uh, build a garage in the front of their house. I will, I'll make a, make a note on the record that they have been before this board in the past. Uh, in 2010, they were denied a variance to do the same thing that they are, uh, come before us again tonight.
Can I interject something?
Well, I'm going to give you one, right now, we can let you guys give us your, uh, give us your, um, what's going on and what you would like to do.
All right, well, uh, in, in 2010, we did approach it as a garage. However, we've made some modification on floor plan and, uh, changed the designation as a storage shed because it's not big enough for a garage. And we're really not interested in it being a garage. Um, we're just interested in having a place where we can put, uh, different items in and keep them out of the weather and, um, you know, just finish off our property because since the flood and that we were forced to excavate and put this retainer uh, system in place, uh, because we had to put a relocate a well because our well was on the pond side, which was underwater. FEMA told us that they were going to condemn the property if we didn't get wa- water access. So that's why we went forward and, and relocated to a new well across the road, causing us to have to excavate to get water to the house. Um, at the time, because of the excavation, we had to put in retainage to keep both my neighbors' property from eroding and my property from eroding. Uh, so we've got this foundation stuck in the front of our house and we're trying to improve our neighborhood as far as the appearance of the property, uh, so that it's not offensive to our neighbors. Um, and so, you know, I, I went out to a, to an architect and he came up with this, this design to be able to enclose, uh, the foundation and make it a usable space, uh, but not for a garage. So the terminology I want to, to clarify, it's not going to be used as a garage. It's only going to be used as a storage area.
Is it attached to your house?
It is not, no.
Okay, okay. I see, uh, uh, Jeff, our resident building inspector and zoning enforcement officer here to join this meeting. Um, I'll ask Jeff if he would like to, um, comment on, on anything on this.
All right. From the plans that I looked at, it is attached. A deck makes it attached. Uh, the overhang, um, underneath would also make it attached. Um, the issue that I had when I denied it was being the attached. It doesn't matter to me if it's a garage or accessory structure. Um, my main concern that, number one, it was attached, which you need a 30-foot setback. Uh, number two, um, the setback that you have is less than two feet. Um, I can't remember the exact, it's one foot.
I, yeah, it's, it's, it's small.
Yeah.
Yeah, originally, when we had the, uh, engineering done on it, the foundation corner came out to, I think it was point four seven, uh, to the, uh, road line. And, uh, if you, on the, on the floor plan that we changed, uh, we moved that corner back, uh, approximately six feet off of that, um, off of that original foundation corner to square up the, you know, to, to, uh, first of all, get the setback away from the road and to, uh, to address a more of a, of a rectangular shape enclosure. So now that, from the, the, the road, I mean, um, when we had to take this apart, uh, there was a retainer wall, timber retainer wall that ran right on that same line, uh, of the road that had to be dismantled in order to excavate and get the water line into the property. And other than that, I mean, if it wasn't for the water, we would have never even addressed or changed any of that. So, you know, our concern is, you know, how can we, uh, improve the, the, uh, the, the property without being offensive to our neighbors and leaving this thing? I mean, it's, it's been there now for going on 10 years. And, you know, our neighbors keep asking, what are you going to do with that? You know? So, you know, we're, you know, we're just trying to, to, um, to make it make sense for improving our property and keeping our neighbors happy.
Don't, do you show a garage, a set of garage doors being put in?
They're, they're going to be repurposed doors. They're, they're being salvaged from a, um, a garage, but they're not going to be garage doors. They're just for the aesthetic value. Uh, we're reusing those doors, repurposed, repurposing those doors. Uh, the only door that's going to be functioned, functioning is the passage door between the two.
I was trying to find a site plan. Did we get a site plan that shows us where it is now?
Uh, you, yes, I submitted site plan, uh, both, uh, physical site plan on paper and, uh, a PDF file.
Ah, there it is. Welcome to the world of Zoom. It's kind of, uh, trying to, uh, find. So you're still on the site plan showing a point four seven on the corner, no?
Well, on the site plan to the existing foundation.
Okay.
That comes down to retain my neighbor's side.
But when you build a garage, you're going to square it, you're squaring it off then, is that what you're saying?
It's actually going to be set back approximately five, five and a half feet from that corner.
Okay, any guys that, anybody want to speak on the, uh, on the ZBA? I, I remember the, uh, the concerns of the, of the plow and the safety of, of that road being quite narrow and where that would end up being. I, I, I'm still quite afraid of having something so close to the front of the street. Um, somebody driving a vehicle hitting it, coming in at night in the dark. Or plow trucks, different things like that.
But, but we've got, my neighbors got a retainer wall that runs right to the corner of that foundation at the street. Um, you know, on the opposite side of our stairs, we've got a timber wall that runs right alongside that road. Um, the road pavement, I mean, you know, we're, we're getting next spring rebuilding that entire road. Um, so that, you know, it's, it's paved, uh, and the, and the, the, the road will be paved 12 feet wide as it's shows on the plan, on the site plan. Uh, it will be approximately, uh, five feet off of all of those walls alongside that, uh, alongside the road.
Mm-hmm.
From my neighbor's properties all the way down to the other side of the Anderson's house. So the plowing, the plowing, I mean, you know, it, you know, I've never, never, we've never had any issues with a plow. It's a, it's a pickup truck plow. It's just a, a one sweep through the, through the road to open, keep the road opened.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the plow doesn't come, I mean, it's never, we've been here for 14 years and we've never even, you know, it's never even come close to the walls.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, my biggest concern, the last time this came up in 2010 was, um, the applicant was putting in a garage that was two feet from the property line, um, which driving in and out of that garage wouldn't give accurate sightlines to, or appropriate sightlines to be able to see what's coming for traffic in, in the street.
I remember.
So removal of the garage and making it so you can't use that as a garage would alleviate those concerns that I had back then.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Nick. Um, my question, I, to your first question, um, the site plan. So I do see the existing site plan of the existing foundation, but did we ever receive a site plan of this new layout?
I just tried to find it. I, did you, I, I don't think that they've done a new site plan. Have you done a new site plan?
No, we haven't done a new site plan. We've just done the, uh, the, um, uh, floor plan of the
Over, okay.
The proposed, um, showing the, you know, the, the, that corner being squared off and being recessed inside that, uh, that corner of the foundation. Um, you know, he, he didn't actually show the exact distance, but based on the scale, I mean, he shows the, he shows an eight-foot door, uh, that probably from the corner of that foundation to the front of the, the planned, uh, wall is pretty close to that same distance. You know, the, probably the one thing that, 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 that I'm not interested in doing is creating an, an issue where there would be concern for damage to the property. Um, you know, based on snowplow and so on and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, this is Nick again. So if I'm correct, so there won't be the ability for a car at the park in front of the shed because of the distance?
Not at all, not at all, not at all. And the only reason that the scooter is on that is because he, the architect's dog's name is Scooter and he said he always shows a scooter on his plan. And that, uh, for whatever reason, but.
Um, are you planning on paving in front of it?
Uh, it, the, well, the, the road, no, there, there's going to be, when, when the new road goes in, like I said, there's going to be from that, from the walls, both at my neighbor's wall and, you know, across our property and my neighbor to the, uh, to the north of me. Um, there's going to be, uh, approximately four feet of, you know, dirt, you know, between the walls and the pavement when they put the new road in.
Where, where do you currently park your vehicles now?
Across, on, we, we have a, we have the property on the opposite side of the road too. And our, and our cars are parked over on that side.
Okay, but as of right now, without this shed there, your cars do fit in this area, correct?
No, no, no. It, again, it's not, it's not big enough for an automobile to, to, you know, to pull into that foundation area, no. No, originally, originally back in 2010, the, the mistake that we made was approaching it as a garage without doing the, the, the obvious calculations that will a vehicle fit in there in the first place? You know, a vehicle won't fit in there in the first place.
So this right now is 15 feet, 15 and a half feet deep?
It's 15 feet, one inch on the, yes, yes.
And 15 feet, one inch, and it's roughly a little tad bit under 25 feet long.
Correct, yes. Mm-hmm.
And the closest corner to the street, you're saying it will be less than six feet?
The closest corner to the street will, will be where my stairs come down is where the closest corner to the street will be.
Which is?
Which is on the north side, uh, approximately, you know, let me just look at the, the site plan as far as that measurement. I'm not sure that they even put that measurement on there.
And, and I'll tell you right now too, as, as the pen, I, I, I know the other guys on the ZBA, we, we'd want to see a site plan with dimensions exactly where, where this is going to be laid out on your site. I, I understand the floor plans, we can surmise and get an idea on, on, on what it is, but we've got to be very, we would have to be very specific on our, um, on your variance request. Five feet, six inches, exac-, you know, not five feet, five and a half, you know, so we would need to see. Last time you came before us, we had, we had you go back and do a survey if I, if I correctly remember.
Yes, right, yes.
And we found, and we found out the road was a lot closer to your house than it actually was. By almost two, by two or three feet back then, so.
Yeah, yes, in the, uh, in the boundaries, the, the road, you know, it's a pri-, being a private road, they show it as a, as a private road variable width, uh, as it goes through. The paved area is only 12 feet wide. The boundary for the road, according to the original plan, was 20 feet. So, you know, as that road, as that road is, is paved, it gives us substantial dis- distance from the pavement to the retainer walls that both my neighbor to the south and, and neighbor to the north and my north side stair property has retainer walls that have been there for, I mean, well before I was, I bought the property. Here's Joe. Uh, Joe, this is Joe Moran, he's, he's my south side neighbor. Um, so, you know, he can.
Well, the retaining wall that's in front of my house.
Mr. Mr. Moran, uh, would you, uh, like to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Dr. Jay Moran. And candidate Joe is 32 Huron Avenue, right next door.
Okay.
And, uh, we have been here, uh, living here for 25 years, but my wife has been here as, it was a cottage at one time, uh, for about 40 years. The wall that we have, the retaining wall, is a stone retaining wall, is right up against the road, has been there ever since. Um, it's a private road, it's an hour road, there is no per se traffic except people coming and going. We do get, we lost people every now and then. But, um, I, I'm probably in favor for the, for this, for this, uh, project because it, it will make the area much nicer and better. And we'll even have a place in case of a big storm to go.
Okay. I'll ask if there's anybody else from the public that would like to, um, speak of this, uh, 28 Huron Ave project. They can, they can jump right on in. Okay. I have no further questions. How about you guys, uh, Nick and, and Rob? I mean, I, as far as, I mean, I, I'm not, I, I need to see a site plan where this is, where this would be, where this is plotted on the site.
No, I have a question. This is, uh, Joe Moran again. I have a question. Do setbacks and, and items like that change when it becomes a, when it's a private road? And we're talking about the actual road land that we own?
I'll let Jeff comment to that. No.
No, that won't change. Um, I would like to add what's been said. Um, everybody right now is talking about retaining walls, walls and everything. What he's doing is a structure and those have setbacks set throughout the town. And that the setback's supposed to be 30 feet. So that, you know, it's up to the board, but those are my comments. Uh, what he submitted to me, it showed that it was under two feet of the plans that he um, whether he changed it after the fact, I don't know. I can't comment on that, but I can comment on what he sent to me. And the existing area was going to be enclosed and that showed, I don't remember the exact, but I know it was under two feet to the road.
That, that closest point from the road to the
Yes.
edge of the, uh, garage.
Right, and again, the, the setbacks are supposed to be 30 feet. Um, and that was one of the reasons why it was denied the first time. Um, it showed, the plans he had back in 2010 showed a garage area with a man door and the man door and the, the section in between has been cut off, um, to open it up for you could call it a retaining wall with a, with a parking area.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
All right, Nick.
Um, you were speaking earlier that, uh, the stairs are going to be the closest thing to the street and not the shed. These are newly constructed stairs to the deck, is that correct?
No, no, these are the timber stairs that have been there along with the timber wall. You know, and they, and the, and the steps, as, as my neighbor Joe, uh, I mean, all of our steps come right at the street. You know, so, I mean, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's the design. It's the design of the, of the area. Um, you know, I mean, we, we can't, we can't rearrange, you know, the, the way that our stairs come out to the road.
I was, I was just asking if they were new, that was all.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay. Uh, and Jeff, if I may ask you a question, um, before I believe we spoke, this is considered a, uh, an attached structure. I believe you mentioned something regarding the deck, or is it because the wall is attached to the house?
The way the wall's gone into the house and the deck, uh, it's attached. Uh, but the main concern is it's a structure. Um, and that's how I viewed it for that, my determination because again, that structure still needs 30 feet back. Um, the stairs from retaining walls, you go through the whole town, you're going to see million, well, not millions, you're going to see hundreds of them that will come right down to the stairs. We don't zone the stairs or retaining walls. We, we, we have the zoning setbacks for structures.
Yes, okay, thank you.
That's the one I have with it.
Uh, so I guess just to clarify a little bit, um, if that, if that deck wasn't on top, you wouldn't consider it attached? The structure is attached or you would still?
I would because of the foundation attached.
Okay, yep, thank you.
The found, the foundation is not attached to the, to the house though.
You have a retaining?
There's a, there's a six-foot space between the foundation of the house and the back wall of that retainer wall. When we excavated, there was no way I could excavate right against the foundation of the house uh, in, in, in order to get water in, into there. So we, we had to manage, we had, when, I mean, when we did this, it was a forced situation by FEMA to get water to the house or it would be condemned. In order to do that, I had to, I had to move rather quickly to keep my neighbor Joe's land from sliding and a, and a land around my foundation from sliding.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think this is, comes back to the same thing we've been talking about, why you need a site plan that shows exactly where everything is on the property so, uh, we can make an informed decision. Where exactly the retaining wall is, is the foundation attached, the not attached? Is there, where the deck is? A, a site plan will show us all that and it can put in the architectural's renderings of where it's going to land, the new product's going to land on the site as it sits. And we can make an informed decision.
I, but if I could interject, you know, I submitted the architectural, uh, floor plans and, and, uh, and, and front view um, in the package with the application for variance.
But is he a stamp?
On the site.
Is he a stamped civil engineer to say exactly where this is being placed on the property? Or is he an architectural engineer and is stamping this as structurally sound? I think they're two separate things.
Right, but, but then on the art, on the, on the site plan that was done back in 2010 by Alpha, it shows the foundation not, not attached to the existing house.
But does it show this plan, this new, new building on it?
It, the only thing it, it does not show is the change of the front wall being parallel with the back wall versus, uh, when we originally applied, we were running the wall, uh, uh, parallel with the road.
Right.
If you remember that, um, you know, so we, we.
So you would be able to go to Alpha and have them update it to meet what's currently, what you're proposing, what you want to do this time?
Um, I could, yeah, yeah.
I think that would make it easier for everyone to make an informed decision instead of not knowing exactly where things land.
We, we couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't give you a variance, not that, all right, so we're not saying if you do this, you're going to get the variance, okay? I, I don't feel very comfortable building, putting a structure that close to the road myself. Uh, uh, also, uh, I don't see, um, I'm looking for some type of hardship here for you to even, uh, be able to build that up in, in the front of, uh, in, in the front. Yeah, because you got to have, you got to need some kind of criteria. Cause you gotta have, you gotta need some kind of criteria for hardships, not just, uh, I, I wanna put a, um, I wanna push, I wanna put a garage slash. It's a garage to me.
But my, my hard, but, but wouldn't my hardship be in the value of my property being unfinished? And, and unsuitable for my neighbors to pass by and view?
Uh, no, no, that's not, that's not a hardship. Financial and, financial reasoning is not a hardship. It's gotta be shape of the land, topography, um, things like that. There is, there is, there is not, there, there's a, there's a burden on you to, 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 uh, to, to show us some type of hardship. Uh, yeah, that, that neighborhood is tight as it is as well. Uh, I'm not sure, this one.
So.
I, I just, I just have a question. This is Lane Hutchins. Um, is there any possibility of a few of the members doing a drive-by here to see what we've got?
Well, we're gonna have to continue the meeting. Uh, at, at least a minimum, well, because we, we, we don't have enough information to make, a- as Rob said, a informed decision. On exactly where. That garage is gonna go, scientifically exactly where, not around about, about five feet.
Not a drive-by.
Six inches. Um, a drive-by won't tell us. I, and I'll go back to your original, your original, um, your original application. It was the same. It was no site plan. We needed to know exactly where it was. Uh, it was not two or three feet, uh, where you were looking for. It was, it ended up being a half, a half six, I don't remember what it was. Ended up being a lot less. So you have to be exact. This is something that you have to record on your, on your, on your deed. It has to be, it, to be a legal document. So if you do it, you need to do it right. And I know I hate to make you go back and, um, uh, put any more money into this to, uh, to have plans drawn. And, um, our decision isn't. Could come back yay or nay, depends on, on what that looks like.
We just leave it as is.
Well, yeah, 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 I'm just, you know, ten years later, still frustrated with. This whole situation that wasn't brought on me by anything other than the, the flood that we had.
Well, what's, what you're bringing, what you're, you're, what you're bringing on yourself is a hardship, cause you wanna build something that wasn't there before. So, the, the, your, your, your flood, the water issue has been taken care of, the foundation's been put in, you held the dirt back. You put your well in, you have well water to your house now, now you wanna add. Uh, and it looks like you actually planned that, uh, back in two thousand and ten when you put the foundation in. Like I said, it looks like it was, because some rebar there, like you were kinda sort of, um. It's gonna start the process of building a garage back there back then. I was on, I don't know. I wasn't, I wasn't there, I don't know about the bill inspector did back then, so.
We're good.
All right, so, I mean, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't make any difference, I mean, or it doesn't make any sense to invite. Uh, you guys to come over here and look at the situation.
Uh, we, we have all been, I, I've been by there over the years.
Um, I've been by as well, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Nick probably has been by and.
I was there a month ago, actually, looking at a property in the neighborhood.
Okay.
All right, so I go spend more money on the, on the Alpha to, to readdress. The setback on the, on the south corner. And.
Can I ask, can I ask one? Excuse me, can I ask one question? What is your frontage on, on Huron as it is?
My total frontage?
Yeah.
Eighty, about eighty, eighty-four feet.
So you're under a hundred and seventy-five foot. How, what is your square footage of your overall lot?
Well, let's see, it's a.
Is lots only point, point two-two acres?
Point two-two, so he's, he's non, he's pre-existing non-conforming. Because he doesn't, doesn't have the frontage, he doesn't have the lot size, he's probably in all his setbacks anyhow.
He, he's not even, he's not gonna leave any room for a septic repair as well, on, on that property. I think you're pretty much gonna cover that whole property with a building, correct?
My septic, my septic, my septic is on the north side and we're, we're having, we're rebuilding that. Uh, that, that meeting goes before the Conservation Commission Monday.
Mm-hmm.
To be able to rebuild the septic system.
Yeah, it's on the other side, yeah.
A septic system's different because that you have to have, it's not building something new. That's, you have to have that to have residence, so they have to allow you to have some kind of septic system, even if you're in your setbacks. That really doesn't, it's not the.
No, I'm just, I was just making a point and be concerned that there was so much building on that lot, there would be actually no place to, uh. Uh, do a, do a septic repair if, uh, the system's been around for thirty years and. And you'd be in another pinch in a couple of years. They wouldn't have any, anywhere on your property to, uh. To do a, a repair, so.
All right, so. Where do we go from here?
I, I, uh, the other members of the board, I, I, I would like to continue the meeting. Uh, to, uh, to see that, to see actually how close that is. Um, again, um, you know, my opinion is, um, that it's, uh, fairly close to the front of that. Front of that road and the, the structure.
Mr. Chairman, this is Nick. I, uh, I share your concerns with how close it is. Granted, everything in that area is very close and. Um, the roads are close, so like he was saying prior, the owner, um, explained that it varies. And I understand that with several neighborhoods in town. However, this is something that makes it, um, very tight in that area and even more tight in case anyone does go off the road. Even though it is slow traffic through there, but I do share your concerns. And the, um, building, uh, officials. Determination of a structure and meeting the setbacks for thirty because it is attached, so. Um, however, I also agree with you and Bob and we, I really would like to see a site plan because. The only one I have is point four-seven, I believe it is. Um, for that exist, what the existing was, and we can't really make a fully informed decision on. How this would practically look just from the floor plan, not even, uh, showing the existing house or property lines.
And, 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 go ahead, Jeff.
Um, if you do a site plan. I personally, but it's up to the board, I personally would like to see a registered professional land surveyor. And also show the, the building coverage for that lot. So I need the building coverage and the professional land surveyor to, to stake out that, that structure.
Okay.
Well, when I, when I said site plan, I, I did mean, uh, a certified person, a stamped person.
Well, some people do a, a professional engineer. That's not their profession. It, you need a land surveyor.
Uh, Alpha, Alpha is a land surveyor. They did the, they did my original engineering back in two thousand and ten.
I would think that they did your, they plotted this out for you back then and probably.
Right.
Be fairly easy for them to do.
Well, yeah, yeah, I would think so.
Should be an update for the bottle.
I, we can continue the meeting for another, uh, at another time. Um, and we can revisit it with you if you wish. Um. Again, you kinda, you hear, uh, uh, what we're talking about. And you, you can make an informed decision on your own, on what you would like, what you would like to do. I mean. You may find out that that, uh, because Jeff is giving us some little, is thinking it might be, it might only be a couple of feet away from the edge of the road over there, so.
But the gentleman, excuse me, the gentleman that is saying that the structure should be.
If I understood. Building inspector.
If I understood correctly, the structure should be thirty feet from.
The front of the road.
From the front of the road. Thirty feet from the front of the road. So with everything else, with everything else that we might put together here for you. I don't know that we can do the structure thirty feet from the road, so this is probably all in.
Well, the original house isn't thirty feet from the road.
No, and we understand that that's a previously non-conforming.
Right.
Lot and, well, that.
Pretty much every, every house on the.
That's why. Right, right, right.
Is not, is not conforming.
Right, is non-conforming.
But this new structure, you wanna see thirty feet from the road?
No, that's, that, that's fine.
No, no.
Yeah, we, we understand, we understand. All right, so, uh, now, the, the, the question is time. Um. As far as revisiting this, um, I mean, we're coming up to the middle of December. Um, I can reach out to Alpha tomorrow, uh, see what we're looking at time-wise. Um. And then, and then we're gone January, February and March.
Oh, the meeting will be on Zoom again, so.
Oh, okay, so we can meet at wherever.
Wherever you are.
Yeah, okay. That's the nice thing about technology.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, okay. So Jeff, if I might ask, um. Once this engineering's done. And I'm, and I'm fishing, you know, because I've got, you know, I've already got thousands of dollars invested in this. Um, you know, and, and, you know, I don't wanna keep throwing money in a black hole. All I wanna do is I want my property to be finished. So that my, myself, when I come in, I don't look at this unfinished problem. And have to deal with it mentally and emotionally. And my neighbors that drive by, that keep looking at it and seeing this. You know, when is this guy ever gonna do something about his property? You know, I mean, we live in, we live in, in a, in a neighborhood that, I mean, we're here because of the water. We're here because of the ambiance of the neighborhood. And, you know, I'm just totally frustrated that, you know, I didn't, I didn't build this in the first place. You know, I'm just trying to make, uh, make right, um, out of a, a bad issue.
So what's your question that you wanna ask me?
I guess. I'm gonna put you on the spot, Jeff. If, if this was your property. What would you be looking to do? And I know that that's a difficult.
Not a fair question.
It's not a fair question, but it's, you know.
It, it's one I can answer, cause I have a retaining wall. What I did is I put a stone wall in front of it and dressed it up and made the retaining wall look appropriate from, from, from the road. I just made it look like a beautiful stone wall. I didn't try to build a garage on it, but that was what my, my choice was. Was to dress up my retaining wall and make it look like a, a country stone wall that was appropriate for, for, for my house. I have a colonial house that looks nice with a stone wall in front of it. Um, that's what I did with my retaining wall, so I can answer that question for Jeff. Um, put myself on the spot.
Mm-hmm.
What you decide to do with your, your, and that obviously wouldn't require setbacks to put fascia on a stone wall, I mean, on a retainer wall. Where you wanna build a structure on it, I think is why we are where we are and you're, you're asking for a variance.
Okay, like I said, it goes back to you create your own, sometimes your creation of, of your own hardship. Uh, understand the hardship issues that we have to, um, meet the letter of the law with.
Mm-hmm. So. You can argue topography because you only have an eighty-foot wide and it's only so many feet long. If we had a site plan, I'd be able to see exactly how long it is and you could argue some hardship that way, but. To, to be fair, and you asked a fair question to the man. The answer for him, cause I had that situation, that's, that was what I did to make it look appropriate for my house. That's just personal opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, so.
All right, uh.
As far as revisiting this.
We have to, we have to, we have to put a, uh, uh, so we continue this meeting, we have to, uh. We have to put a date on it right now. And, uh, what do you feel that you'll be able to? It's, it's the upcoming holidays, do you wanna wait till the, after the first of the year? After New Year's?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would think so, yes, yeah, to be fair with everybody, sure.
Um.
Do we have anything else on the calendar?
We, we, we don't, we don't. The first Wednesday after the, uh, uh, after the holiday is January sixth. I'm a, I'm available January sixth. What you, Rob?
Um, as far as I know, I'm available January sixth. There'll be a planning board meeting January fifth. Um, but. That's up to you, you, it's, it's your, your calendar.
Um. January sixth, first is on a Friday. Um, boy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna opt for the thirteenth if you guys don't mind.
That works for me.
It gives me a little bit of, a, a, a little bit of room after the holiday and, um, like you said, uh, all those, you know, the meeting, so.
That, uh, that works for me as well. Okay, um, do you want me to make that?
Mr. Hutchins, you think you can pull it together for the thirteenth? Gives you plenty of time to think about it and, uh, talk to.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Alpha tomorrow and, um, and, uh, see what they can do. Where the, where they've already engineered the site plan. Um, you know, it'd just be them coming out and doing whatever, uh, as far as the change in the.
They might, uh, my opinion is they might be able to, they might be able to give you a roundabout number. Right over the phone by just pulling up the plan to say, that's probably about. You think it's six feet, we're thinking it's more what Jeff is, might be thinking, it's only gonna be two or three, and then you can make them.
Now, we're talking about the, the north, I mean, the, uh, south corner. Uh, that's, that's right, right now shows point four-seven.
The other corner, it, that, what about the other corner?
Corner, the other corner. Um, yeah, see, the other corner, they don't, they don't show. They just show it blending with the, with the existing.
Road.
Uh, timber wall.
Yeah, that looks, that looks close to me as well, to the road, so.
Well, yeah, again, you know, the, the timber wall, the stone walls that are north and south of me are all right on the road.
Yeah, I wanna see both of those. I like to see both corners, knowing where they both are.
All right.
Okay, cause they're both, they're both in the, uh, they're both in the setbacks and they, they need to be addressed in your, uh.
Mm-hmm.
In your, in, in the right, in the way we write this up, so.
Okay.
Uh, okay, uh. Okay, I'm gonna continue this meeting to, uh, make a motion to continue this meeting to. I'll accept, uh, what do I got, uh, what I say, January thirteenth. Fellas, and it'll be a Zoom meeting at six P M. as well.
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so I'm gonna take a roll call on continuation of this meeting. Uh, Rob Joes?
Aye.
Nick Velozza?
Aye.
Jim Frey says aye. Meeting will be continued to January thirteenth, six P M. Uh, on Zoom, and you should get a notice as well, uh, on, uh, a link for that from, uh, from those as well, so.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye.
Take care. Okay, uh, do we have, I just gotta clear my calendars in the way. On, uh, on, on a call to meet and call to order the, uh, who's next here? What do we have? Russell Pelletier. Are we here, Mr. Pelletier?
Yes, I am.
Oh, there you are. There you are, thank you. Try to get rid of my calendar, it's right over your face.
No.
Get rid of that, I don't wanna, ah, there it goes. Okay, I'm gonna call to meet in the, uh, um. Meeting for, uh, Mr. Russ, Mr. Russell Pelletier on one nineteen Bullock Road, who wishes to construct a accessory apartment. Okay, Mr. Pelletier, would you like to, uh, talk to us and tell us what you would like to do?
Yep, uh, basically, uh, my eighty-two-year-old mother, uh, had a death. Yep, uh, basically, uh, my eighty-two-year-old mother, uh, had a death in the family and couldn't stay where she was. So I was doing some remodeling, which Jeff has, uh, approved of everything so far above the garage. And we made that all part of the house. Um, but a big factor, which she's still, still gets around pretty active. So to have the inconvenient, it's not, she wants to cook herself, you know what I mean, by herself? And with COVID nineteen and I'm in construction, I'm in contact on job sites a lot and I'm trying to limit my exposure to her as much as possible. And this would help in that, I mean, she's not gonna be cooking huge meals. All she wants to do is have her breakfast in the morning or little things like that, so she doesn't have to come up and down the stairs multiple times a day. Everything is already in place upstairs, I don't know, you should have all the plans.
We do.
So all it basically is, is, um, a second egress. There's a window upstairs already in the living room area upstairs consists of a living room, a bedroom and a bathroom. It's all been inspected by, uh, Jeff and the fire inspector, smoke detectors are working, everything's in order. We would put a, just, we wanted, we want permission to, um, you know, put in a small kitchenette. Uh, then we would put a door from the, uh, kitchen down here, up, going up the stairs, there would be a door that Jeff recommended. And then there'd be, we remove the window on the second floor and install a deck going down the stairs to a second egress. And that's, that would be the only items in the project.
And, uh, like you said, this is for a family member, which is your mom.
Yep.
Uh, which this is exactly what this bylaw is for, um, why we have it. And, uh, you're under the thousand square feet, which is the requirement, and it is part of the existing house. Again, this is part of the requirement, now, I always gotta tell people the process is, um, it, it, it's a, um, you, you have to renew this, not in five years, you have to renew this and you have, you'll, it's a five-year process.
Okay.
It's, uh, every five years, uh, not, uh, we don't have to come before us in five years. You just have to, uh, confirm that this is still being used as an accessory apartment. And then in ten years, if it's still being used as an accessory apartment, you have to come back before us and, uh, redo this whole process again, uh, uh, to, um, to, to get the permit to do that a, as well. Uh, again, we don't want this to become an apartment in a couple of years, in five years, because that has happened in town, people will try, you'll try to sell the house as a, um, as a, uh, two-family or, or it's a.
Right.
Apartment, we don't want that to happen, things like that, um. So, uh, any guy, anybody on the board like to, uh, speak on this?
Uh, I, I don't, this is Nick, I, I don't see a problem, he's under the thousand, like you said, and just to clarify with the five years that you were mentioning, this is solely for the purpose of, um, a family member. Um, in this case, it would be your mother, so if that was to change, that is something that would, um, no longer allow someone else living there until you came back to the board, um, for another member or something like that, as Mr. Chairman was talking about.
Yep, no, I'm not looking to rent this out or whatever, this is strictly for her and that's it, it's kinda been a crazy year, so.
Understood, mm-hmm. So is that Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions?
Okay, all right, Nick. Okay, Rob, you good?
I'm good, I have nothing else to add.
Perfect, okay. Um, okay, let's, you wanna close this public portion and, uh, you guys ready for a, uh, ready for vote on this, or?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion's been made in second to close the public hearing, and the roll call, uh, vote, Rob Joes?
Aye.
Nick Velozza?
Aye.
Jim Frey, aye. Our public portion has been closed, I will accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the in-law apartment as shown on the plans, uh, supplied.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made in second to approve, to approve the accessory apartment on one nineteen Bullock Road, East Breetown. Um, I will do a roll call vote, uh, Rob Joes?
Aye.
Nick Velozza?
Aye.
Jim Frey says aye. So you have been approved for your accessory apartment?
Thank you.
Nels will take care of all the proper paperwork for you, you can contact him and, um, he'll give you all the ins and outs and what's going on.
Okay, yeah, submit the drawings back to Jeff for approval for.
Well, he has to give you a permit, so.
Yes, for a permit.
Yeah, yeah, so you can talk to Jeff about that on, on what, on what he needs.
Okay.
There will be, yeah, so that's it, you're good.
All right, thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you, good.
Thank you.
Nels, do we have anything else, is that it?
Uh, just the minutes.
Just the ma, just the minutes, anybody wanna?
Yeah, I didn't see the minutes.
Yeah, nor did I, hold on, let's see. Let's see if I'm even.
Uh, I'm still looking through my email and I thought you said you did send them in one of the emails, but it wasn't.
I thought.
Oh.
Oh, Z B A minutes, I'm looking at.
Z B A minutes. Okay. Why was there for that, okay.
Yeah, it's the same one with the, uh, the site plan of the old structure from the last property.
Yep, 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 this is Earl Braley.
Oh, I did read these. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Rob, did you finish reading?
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from October twenty-eighth meeting.
Second.
Okay, uh, motions are made in second to approve the minutes from the, oh my goodness, what was that, was that date?
October twenty-eighth.
October twenty-eighth, uh, meeting, uh, roll call vote, Nick Velozza?
Aye.
Rob Joes?
Aye.
Jim Frey, aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I didn't let you finish, Mr. Chairman.
Third. Is that a silver Christmas tree?
At, at you. I'm sorry?
Is that a silver Christmas tree, like from the fifties? Well, ones are all silver.
No, that's the one from the pit.
Oh, well, the way the angle was, it looked like it was shiny, like, like one of those white Christmas trees from the fifties with the purple balls.
I knew I was gonna be on camera, so I only decorated the top.
Uh, you certainly didn't dress it up for it, neither did I. All right, guys, motion to adjourn, uh, yeah, uh.
Aye.
I'll take a roll call on that, Rob?
Aye.
Aye, Nick?
Yes, yes.
Aye, Jim Frey, aye.
Good night, everybody, have a Merry Christmas.